Thank you, Mayor. Council members present. Council members.
Apparently, we're having a technical issue. We're gonna pause for just a second. Yes. Okay, Councilmember Davis's computer is non-functional. He needs a plug-in. Thought the elves were supposed to come in at night and fix everything, not break everything. All right. So I'm waiting to hear from Jody on whether or not you're ready to go. And I'm waiting to hear from Ed, Councilmember Davis, to see when you're ready to go. Do I understand that people cannot hear us remotely? Is that what I'm understanding? All right, are we all good? Okay, is there any objection to proceeding? Everybody's technology is working at least well enough for now? All right, all right, we're gonna go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda. That's item number four, public comments. This is a time set aside for members of the public to speak to the city council on any issue related to the city of Monroe, except any quasi judicial matter that is subject to a public hearing. Three minutes are afforded to each speaker. Can I ask that the clerk please place a three-minute timer up on the screen? Keep looking at that monitor. I want to look at this monitor over here. Sorry. I think she's got it. All right. All right, sounds good. So we'll first turn to the audience. Is there anybody that would like to speak to the council this evening? Come on up and please state your name and area of residence for the record. Let me see if I've got, yep, I got the right microphone. That's good. So say your name and area of residence, then we've got the three-minute timer up so you can check that.
My name is Ben Metzger. That's my wife, Olivia. My son is real back here. We live on Lewis Street, Monroe. We moved in about a month ago now. We really like the city of Monroe. We have my brother-in-law and his whole family live two minutes from us. We're right in between both sets of parents within 10 minutes. This is where we want to plant our roots. We want to be here long-term. The issue I want to bring forward is that of homelessness. And we've been surprised by the pervasiveness of the issue, especially in our area. Very, very early on at our home, we found human waste on our property. And shortly after discovered that a drug addict often slept out behind our cars on the backside of our house. The cops have been alerted several times by us and the neighbors, but he keeps coming back because he knows there's nothing that anyone is going to, or I don't know, can do about it right now. My wife feels unsafe walking through her car by herself. She feels unsafe going outside at night. And part of this fear is that the very first day we were in our home, a homeless man cut through our front yard through our backyard to get to the back of our house. I want to underscore the fact that I don't feel comfortable leaving my wife and my son at home alone right now. When I go to work, just with this guy out there, she doesn't feel safe when I'm gone. It's not a good situation. When we first moved into the house, we talked to a neighbor and they said, don't go to the park down the street unless you're with a large group. It's not just us who feel this way. And it is sad that a community place, a community gathering place like a park has been completely neglected to the point where its taxpayers are unable to use the property without fear of, you know, being harmed or just feeling unsafe. To the bottom line, my family likes Monroe a lot. This is where we want to be. This is where we want to plant our roots. We also know that the city has a lot of plans for the next couple of decades. But you can't grow this place without making your citizens first feel safe and keep them safe. And this isn't an impossible ask. I know that there are a lot of cities that are further along than Monroe. Close by you is Snohomish, like Woodenville. Even Bellevue, these places where homeless people don't live in cardboard boxes on Main Street. And it's a problem that needs to be fixed. So that's all I've got. Thank you all for your time. I'm sure I'll get to know all of you well at some point because I'll be around at future meetings, I'm sure. But thank you all for your time.
All right, thank you very much. We're gonna go ahead and if you are remote and would like to speak to the council this evening, please go ahead and hit star nine if you're on the phone, or please raise your hand if you're in Zoom. Councilmember Hanford, did you have something?
A clarification. Was the address stated at the beginning, just so I know?
Ben, did you state your address?
I can say my address. I can give the address.
You don't need to give the address. If you want to, you can, but you don't need to. So, thank you. Perfect.
Which, which street was it? I'm sorry. Thank you.
Thank you.
The street is on the.
The staff can follow up with you, Chair, Councilmember. All right. We're gonna go ahead and move on to the people that we have online. First person I have is Ed Engel. So, Ed, we're gonna go ahead and bring you forward to the panel. Okay, Ed, you should be in the panel. You should be able to hear me.
Give me two seconds. All right. Hi, my name is Ed Engel and I am the Mobility Justice Advocate of the Snohomish County Transportation Coalition, or SNOTRAC for short. SNOTRAC is a mobility management coalition that advocates for connecting people and communities in Snohomish County and beyond with safe, equitable, and accessible transportation. Due to this, we convene public, nonprofit, and private transportation and human service agencies to identify mobility gaps and opportunities, especially for our priority populations, including people with disabilities, older adults, youth, low-income households, people of color, and tribes. A unifying issue across our priority populations is low or no access or ability to use a personal vehicle. In addition, priority populations tend to be disproportionately impacted by poor land use patterns and transportation options that increase exposure to air pollutants in household housing and transportation costs, which in turn decrease the life expectancy and socioeconomic mobility. During the committee meeting earlier this evening, staff presented updates to the land use and transportation elements of the comprehensive plan. As Monroe updates its comprehensive plan, SNOTRAC provides best practices endorsed by such organizations such as AARP, PolicyLink, and the National Association of City Transportation Officials. We recommend setting a goal to reach zero traffic fatalities, zero injuries within the next decade, and establishing a data-driven strategic plan to reach the goal using the U.S. Department of Transportation's Safe Systems approach. Setting goals to increase housing and transportation affordability and to become an age- and ability-friendly community by allowing for abundant and dense housing options for seniors to age in place, fully funding and implementing ADA projects to realize the city's transition plan within the next decade, building an all-ages and abilities bikeway network that connects schools, parks, shops, and major destinations with direct, comfortable bikeways, implementing more robust automated speed enforcement with revenue directed towards physical safety improvements to the targeted streets, completing key citywide and regional trails, including the US2 Shared Use Path, Use Path from the fairgrounds to downtown, and then reducing parking requirements on new development and requiring new projects to implement transportation demand management strategies by contracting with a transportation management association. That I conclude my comment. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you very much, Ed. We're gonna go ahead and move you back to the attendees list. And the next person that we have who has signed up to speak is G. Wood. We will move G. Wood into the panel. G. Wood, you are now in the panel. If you could, please take yourself off of mute and turn on your video if you like. And please state your name and area of residence or affiliation with the city for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Gabriel Wood. I am a property owner at 302 South Ferry Avenue in Monroe. And I just wanted to welcome Ben to the neighborhood, but also emphasize that some of the homeless issues that we're experiencing and some of the people in our community are part of our community. And they've been a part of our community for several years. And a lot of us who have roots in this town have gotten to know them and try to treat them humanely. And I think that's a good approach to all these issues.
Okay, thank you very much. Do you have anything further?
No, that's it.
Okay, thank you very much for your comments. We'll move you back to the attendees list.
Thank you.
If there's anybody else that is interested in speaking this evening, if you're in the audience, please raise your hand. If you're online, please raise your hand remotely. All right, seeing none, we're gonna go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda. That item would be the consent agenda. I turn to the council. Councilmember Scarborough, go ahead.
I move your accept the consent agenda.
Okay, I understand that the motion is to approve the consent agenda as provided in the packet. Is that correct?
Correct.
All right, and I have this motion from Councilmember Scarborough, a second from Councilmember Hanford. Any discussion on the motion? There being none, we'll move to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes six-zero. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is new business, and I will turn to our clerk. Wykoff, whoops, we hit the button at the same time. So I'm gonna go for it.
Okay.
All right. You've got the ball.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Before you tonight are proposed amendments to the council rules of procedure. In the track changes was in your packet, as well as a detailed list of all of the amendments. I will briefly go over some of them.
Could you move to the next slide?
Oh.
If, if there is a next.
There is.
Thank you.
Multitasking, not my favorite thing sometimes. So one of the items that we are requesting amendment is that back on February 28th, council voted to add human services as one of the tasks for the Public Safety Committee. So this amendment will just memorialize that. The majority of the other amendments, hold on, let me find the next page I was gonna go to, are related to public hearings. We did make some minor amendments to the quasi judicial public hearing process just to be in line with the legislative. However, because of the nature of quasi judicial, not all of the amendments that we made to legislative are a fit for quasi judicial. So to briefly go over the proposed amendments, one of them is related to comments from the audience during a public hearing and that they will be directed to the presiding officer and council as a whole and will be reasonably germane to the topic of the hearing. We also added making out-of-order comments or taking actions that disrupt the meeting may be subject to removal from the meeting rather than shall. And as a side note, Mayor and staff will be working with the city attorney to create perhaps an appendix to the rules of procedure that outline that particular piece of it a little bit in more detail. That's some work we're gonna be doing a little later in the year. Let's see. Oh, I'm going backwards.
Clerk Wykoff, just a second. Councilmember Scarborough, go ahead.
I was gonna make a suggestion back under the if somebody gets out of hand, it says they may be removed, might you like to add a sentence that would require a majority vote of the councils just to cover the presiding officer against any allegations of being arbitrary or capricious? The presiding officer wanted to remove somebody, and you have the vote of the council, then that person that you were removing wouldn't have a a way to imply the residing officer was being prejudiced. Just a thought.
Yeah, so let's think a little bit about that. If we've got something that's happening that is dangerous, or thankfully, this hasn't happened, right? But if we have something that's escalating quickly, we may not have time for a vote. So I like the idea that, that if it's something that is slower moving, that by having the language "may" in there, that the presiding officer may turn to the body and ask for that motion to have him removed. I think that gets it to me at what Jody was talking about, what Clerk Wykoff was talking about with having an appendix, because I, too, just like you, Councilmember Scarborough, want to be very careful on exercising this. We haven't had a need to do that yet. I hope that we won't ever have to do that. But it would be my intent to work with our attorney to draft something to bring forward to council, which might lead to either an appendix or maybe some more detail in this section. I myself am not opposed if the council wanted to add something like that. I'm not opposed to doing that, but also if the council would like us to put more thought into it and bring forward something like a memo and then incorporate some of that into another update, I'm fine with that, too.
I'll leave that up to the rest of the council. Just, I thought I had to. You as a presiding officer or the pro tem is comfortable the way it is, that's okay. I just had that thought while I was reading.
I appreciate that. Thank you. Councilmember Gamble, go ahead.
Yeah, actually, it's, I think it's a very good, because the way it's written, I mean, I think we should specify, because if it's life, you know, kind of health, immediate imminent danger type of deal, then yeah.
He's gonna, yeah, we're gonna have people jumping on the first.
Correct, but the way it's written, it's like out of what does it say? I want to get the quote right. Out-of-order comments, that's very subjective.
Yeah.
And it would be something that, you know, if you don't have the right presiding officer, they could make that determination, so that would protect.
Okay.
I would, I would love to see someone that would specify that, so it's.
So one of the things that I could invite the council members to do is while Clerk Wykoff is writing, if you wanted to draft up a sentence, we could certainly see if the council wanted to make a, an amendment, you know, make a motion and in that include the language you'd want added. Again, I am not at all opposed to it. So we can also spend a little bit more time coming up with better language. I think my preference is the council's comfortable with this is to adopt it sooner than later, as we will have legislative matters coming to the council, and the way things are right now, there's a long script to read. So, all right, so we can come back to that, Councilmember Gamble, and I'm gonna turn back to Clerk Wykoff to continue coming through, and then we'll.
And I'm gonna actually, Mr. Lell.
Sorry. Attorney Lell, just a second. Okay, Attorney Lell, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Council. With respect to involving the council in a direct vote in relation to potentially ejecting a, an out-of-order speaker from the chambers or the meeting, I do think that that probably warrants some additional legal and staff review before the council votes to consider an amendment to that effect. The mayor under state law is given the exclusive authority to preside over the meetings, and I have an initial concern as to whether or not the proposal to involve the council in that process might intrude upon the mayor's statutory authority. That's something I would need to look into further.
All right, thank you. Any follow-up questions from the council for Mr. Lell? All right, thank you. All right, Clerk Wykoff.
Thank you, Mayor. Continuing on to page 80 of your packet or page 11 of the procedures under Legislative Public Hearing Procedures, under Speaker Sign-In, we added "and area of residence or association with the city of Monroe" to be consistent with our public comments. This is one item that we did not change in the quasi judicial, because it is specific to a single parcel. We do ask for the address during a quasi judicial hearing. And I'm sure Attorney Lell could elaborate if you needed him to. The next paragraph, we, we wanted to make sure that we're staying consistent with our current practice, and so added a sentence that says, unless otherwise specified, the amount of time allowed per speaker shall be three minutes. It still allows council to authorize longer, but that's, we just wanted to call that out. Under the public hearing process, after we had our first public hearing, we realized that the script was going to be probably longer than the public hearing itself. And so we decided, and with the legislative committee's blessing, we added that the presiding officer is gonna introduce the agenda item, open the hearing, and announce that the following rules of order are included in the agenda packet and available on the website, and that the presiding officer may read the rules of order aloud, and then the rules of order are as follows. That allows the mayor or the mayor pro tem, whoever's presiding over the meeting, to make a kind of a call on whether or not this is one of those hearings that we should probably read them aloud or, or not. We added the comment shall be directed to the officer and the body as a whole again in that section. The next big one is that the presiding officer notes that all written or otherwise recorded comments received before the published deadline have been added to the record and forwarded to city council. We added that after the staff report, the presiding officer asks council if they have any clarifying questions and then goes on to public comment. And then after public comment, the presiding officer asks if council has any additional questions to ask of staff. And that is about yeah, that's the last significant change that we made, and I am available to answer any questions.
Thank you. I feel that what's been amended here is more in line with what we currently do. So I think the rhythm of going into a legislative public hearing would be more consistent with what you're accustomed to. And it provides some flexibility to be able to read things into the record if necessary or to alert people who are here. I will say this, that I will work with staff over the next couple of weeks or so to, to get more information about what to do in the event that somebody should be removed from chambers. And, and we'll see about how we can add some, you know, some, something where at least the council, if the mayor doesn't take action, that the council could certainly request it or something. So maybe there's some way that we can come up with something to address those concerns. Councilmember Scarborough, go ahead.
My concern wasn't the council should have a boast in saying he should or she should be removed from the meeting. My comments were based on CYA of the presiding officer, just so the person in the audience doesn't feel like it was an arbitrary movement on their part. Not that you, you know, what Zach said probably mutes my point, that the government says you can do it, that that may be all you need. I just, I just was concerned about if you or they or the pro tem had to do it, if somebody could come back and say, he didn't like me, she didn't like me, et cetera. So, but if Zach says that you have the right and the law says you have it, and we, as a city, aren't worried about repercussions of somebody not liking having been thrown out of a meeting, that's okay with me. That was the only reason I brought it up.
Yeah, so I'll say that I'm very concerned about that. People have freedom of speech, and so when they come here to the podium, I'm, you know, I understand that we need to allow that freedom of speech to occur within the designated timeframe. They need to be, to have the same access that any other person would have. We've had people come in and, and use four-letter words with us. I'm understanding that we are supposed to allow that to a certain degree. And so we, you know, where I'm going in my thought process is that we need to make certain that there is a memo, an addendum, or something that makes it very clear what the legal risks are and what the criteria are for making it acceptable to have somebody removed. And like I said, we haven't had to have that happen yet. I think the, the one time we came close to something was in the first year of me serving, so it would have been about eight years ago, eight and a half years ago. And all we did was make a statement at the beginning that, let's make certain everybody's civil, and things got a little heated, but at the same time, they didn't quite reach the point where somebody had to be ejected from the meeting. I know that a couple of council members that were here while I was gone, between council and mayor, that you had a lot of other hearings where people came in and things may have been more lively, I guess would be what I'll stick with for now. But I do want to make certain that there is something in place, and if there's a checks and balance, you know, the way it's currently written, if you ever have a concern about something, you can always do point of order. And that's a parliamentary procedure. I think you can do point of order and, and say this person's being unruly. Can the mayor please enforce the, the rules of procedure and remind them that they need to be, you know, follow these criteria? So that, that may be an option. And then if a mayor ejects somebody, I'd imagine that at least the council could, could say point of order. I don't feel that this is being fairly done and have a discussion or make some sort of motion, but I'll get more information. We'll get more information from Attorney Lell and get back to the council.
His hands up, Mayor.
Oh. Whose hands up?
Zach will. Attorney.
He's not up there. Okay. I need, this is why I need one more monitor. I don't need one more. Go ahead, Zach. Sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I think your summary, I think, was very accurate. I just wanted to add, it's an extremely high bar legally to eject someone from an open public meeting. And the mayor's comments, I believe, were very accurate in that respect. It's a very, very high constitutional standard. The, the council's business at the meeting actually has to be either disrupted or an imminent threat of being disrupted in order to exercise that, what is essentially a very draconian remedy. So I'm happy to work with staff to come back with a kind of a more detailed description of what the current legal standard is for that, but I do want the council to be aware that it is a very, very high bar. And simple use of profanity, although that can be prohibited by your rules of procedure as inappropriate conduct, is typically not in and of itself a basis for ejecting someone from the meeting.
Thank you very much, Attorney Lell. Councilmember Fulcher, go ahead.
So I think that for the short time that we had the long, drawn-out introductions at the beginning of each public hearing, I think what we were trying to accomplish was just to, to make sure that every, every T was crossed and I was dotted, and CYA, as you said. I think that having the website have the rules and procedures, I mean, the rules there that like what we expect from someone during a public hearing, that's great, because we are in an age of everyone referring to their phones in that order. I think that on our sign-in sheet, we should just add a QR code that brings us straight, brings the people straight to the, what we, you know, just. brings the people straight to the, what we, you know, just welcome, we're glad for your comments. Please be aware, these are our expectations of, of behavior.
Okay. I'll ask staff to look into putting a QR code on the sheet. I think that's a great idea. All right. Anything else? Okay, and you're done with your presentation, Clark Wykoff? So I turn to council. If you have no further questions or certainly requested action on the screen, feel your consideration. Councilmember Hanford, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I I am fine with the written proposals as is, just so that we can get this part of it done. And in the meantime, if you have, turning a little look into that. But I'm fine with, with the wording. I, I feel like it's good, so I'm going to move to a group resolution, twenty twenty-three, zero zero two, and then in the Monroe City Council rule of the procedure.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Hanford, a second from Councilmember Gamble for the request action. Six point one, new business that, which is showing on the screen. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? All opposed? Sorry, I was waiting for everybody to say favor or opposed. All right. Thank you. Bushen passes six zero. We're gonna go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda, and that item would be councilmember reports. So go ahead and start off on the end there with Councilmember Scarborough.
I have nothing to report tonight.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Hanford.
Thank you, Mary. I enjoyed the open house at middle school, and it was really great to see the staff, just everybody stepping up and kicking and seeing the citizens involved. It was, it was great to witness and observe all the different ideas, so that was great.
Thank you. Councilmember Kenny.
Thank you, Mayor. I also was at the comp plan event, and it was very well done and enjoyed it a lot. Also attended dinner on Thursday with councilmembers Hanford and Fulter with our Snohomish County elected officials. That was really wonderful, my first time ever. And last but not least, track is back. We have our first track meet tomorrow in Arlington, so I encourage all of you to come out to Monroe High School on May third and May twenty-fourth and cheer on our track team from Monroe. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Fulter.
Ditto. The comp plan meeting, the SCC dinner, and also the five twenty-two meeting to revive our ever continuing fights, finish five twenty-two that we had on April twelfth. So, and I really appreciated the Department of Transportation brave man coming out and answering some good questions. I, I was a little sad about our turnout being a little small, but I, I understand we had pretty good turnout online, so for which I am grateful. And I am excited to keep that, that bell ringing, so we can someday get movement on that project, so.
Thank you. Councilmember Davis?
Nothing this evening.
Thank you. Councilmember Gamble?
Yeah, I'll just echo on the comp plan. I was not able to stay the whole night, but just well run. You know, the, I liked the visuals and the stickers and I will say the stickers reflected some of the comments we heard tonight on where people don't feel safe. And that was, you know, a large group there that all agreed in the same location, so definitely something that we, we do need to address. But yeah, it was very well run. I was very encouraged to see the amount of participation. It was cross functional. We had folks from all over, because that was the other thing, you know, being able to see with the stickers where people lived, you know, they were putting where they were from, they were there, and we had representation from all over, all over the city, so it was great.
Thank you. We're gonna go ahead and move on to the staff and department reports. We're gonna start off with Chief Jolly. Chief Jolly, can you hit your microphone, so I know which one is you? All right, your seat sixteen. All right, chief, seat sixteen.
Seat sixteen. Good evening, Mayor, Council. The council report is in your packet if you have any questions. I would just point out a couple of things anecdotal in nature, and that one of the incidents described on the first page does mention gun was involved in the arrest of that person. We are seeing more guns involved and being carried by people here in Monroe. Even yesterday, we had an individual on a motorcycle run from us, which is now, again, becoming a common theme even here in Monroe. That person was unable to make a turn on Tern Place and subsequently crashed their motorcycle, and we were able to take him into custody after that, but a gun was found on that individual. So we are seeing some effects of some of the things that have been insulated from what I referred to geography wise as the I five corridor and some of those things. It, it's becoming a little more prevalent here. And so one thing we're doing in conjunction with other Snohomish police agencies, we're going to categorize all those times where we do have a gun and/or when people do take off from the police, so we can track that statistically. We'll get back to you. If those are significant numbers, we'll include them in the statistics. Thank you for your support and appreciate being here tonight.
Thank you. Questions for Chief Jolly? Councilmember Gamble, go ahead.
It's kind of a, it's a question, but it's also, I should have brought it up during my report, because I know one of the biggest areas of is one of the things we were hoping we would get out of the legislature during this, and I know there's still a lot of time for emergency session, all that kind of stuff, but the possession and them addressing the, whether it's misdemeanor, gross misdemeanor, and we have no action as of right now, that law expiring on July first. And I know the, the county council is already, hey, what are we gonna do locally? So I would just ask, what's our plan? Or what's, and maybe we could get that on the radar, because
It's on our radar.
Okay, if anything, I don't trust, I mean, I don't trust them to get anything done down there. So maybe we could bring that back later.
Yeah, so I'm meeting with staff on Monday and our, and our prosecuting attorney to discuss what our options are, and knowing that there may or may not be a resolution out of Olympia. But we, I did contact staff yesterday and started having that more in-depth conversation. I think people actually thought that the legislature was gonna do something.
Yeah.
And they obviously didn't, so anyway, we'll get back to staff in the next couple of weeks as we get info. And we are aware that status quo right now, we're looking at July first, so we, we know that there's a short timeframe to make that happen, but something that we can achieve.
Okay, great. And maybe what we do will, will be public record, but I would like to consider it in conjunction with what Snohomish County is doing. Thanks.
Yeah, we, and just to that point, for you and also for the record, well, one of the things I'm concerned about is having regulations that are too substantially different between jurisdictions, and so we'll be, we'll be looking at that and, and then having a discussion internally about what that means, and what might be different for the city versus the county, but, and then we'll come forward to the council. Perfect. All right. Anything, anything further for Chief Jolly? All right. Thank you very much, Chief. Next one then would be Public Works, and that would be Director Roberts, which is Director Roberts, so go ahead.
I get my own mic. How about that? Big deal.
You're the only one, along with the councilmembers, that has a name, so.
I should probably trade with Becky then. In any case, good evening, everyone. Just run you through the report real quickly. Leading off, we have something that kind of happens in the background of government is impactful, very impactful to a few people and a few residents here in Monroe. Not that impactful to the masses, but it's the CRS program. We put a lot of work into that program. We also take pride in the fact that we have been rated a level five, which is the top rating for CRS multiple cycles in a row now, and it roughly equates to twenty-five percent off of flood insurance costs for those that live in those high hazard areas, so it allows them to stay in their residence. Moving on through the next item would be the pre-design work that's going on with Wash Dot for the Lewis Street Overlay Project. Wash Dot is incorporating what is now complete streets. The council is aware of the complete streets ordinance that we have here in Monroe. In fact, I think all of you participated in that process. And now Wash Dot is bringing those, those active transportation and protecting pedestrians, those type of principles to Monroe. So what we are doing, the city engineer and I, Scott Peterson, are on the pre-design team. We're working to make sure that their public outreach hits us, hits the right areas within our, our city, and that also we're considering what the interests of our downtown are as they go through the design phases. So we're, we're only in our second meeting. This will continue to evolve, and we'll continue to give you updates on it. And then the last thing, just reporting out on our on-call roster summary and our operational metrics there at the end of the report. That concludes, Mayor. Back to you.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Director Roberts? Go ahead. Oh, no questions. Thank you very much, Director Roberts. And I'm gonna stop touching the button. We're now gonna go to our Finance Department and Director Hassert. Director Hassert, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, normally, I'm just real quick and tell you the reports in your packet, and I'm here for questions, but there are a couple of things that I did want to bring up tonight, one of which is not in, in the report, but is a subsequent item that just happened as of Monday night. As you know, we are in the process of doing a branding project. Council had approved the contract with Jay Ray, and I'm happy to report that Phase One is now officially complete. As of Monday night, we completed the last focus group. Phase One included the survey that I know most of you have taken, as well as conducting some focused business interviews, and then two focus groups. So now we're going into Phase Two, which is analysis of the information. Jay Ray will be analyzing that and then coming back to myself and Katie here in a couple of weeks with a draft. We have a, a meeting set up on May thirtieth to bring that draft to the, what we are calling the brand leadership team, at which point afterwards, we will, we will cycle up our brand ambassadors to start talking about what came out of the analysis and what our three Ps are looking like, which is position, promise, and personality. That is anticipated to be done by the end of July, and then we go into Phase Three, which is brand visuals, and that's when we get all of you guys. And when I say you guys, of course, council, but also our other boards involved as we start getting to what the brand is gonna start looking like in the color scheme and things like that, so that hopefully with Phase Four is when we will start implementing the brand, and that is, we're, we're on track with our timeline, and that's expected to be done no later than turn of the year. So I wanted to bring that to everybody's attention. Mr. Mayor, I think there is a question, but then I wanted to talk about REIT for a moment.
Excellent. Thank you. Councilmember Kenny, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Director Hassert, I'm just curious, who is on the brand leadership team and who are the brand ambassadors? And what does ambassador mean?
So the leadership team is Mayor Thomas, Deborah Knight, myself, Katie Darrow, and Mark Newman. So it's a core group of course officials and staff. The brand ambassadors, we have some folks that we are highlighting. We have reached out to half of them, but we have not committed to, or we have not contacted all of them yet, so I don't really want to share too many names. But ideally, what we were trying to find is people who are community leaders, not necessarily that they own businesses or, but have some influence, are connected, so that we're not just getting their input, but their, their peer group, in a sense. And so where the focus groups were a commitment of one meeting or one hour-long phone call, the brand ambassadors are committing to about three to four meetings, and so we want to make sure they're comfortable with that as well.
Got it. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right. Thank you, Director Hassert. Go ahead.
Okay, so the other item that I wanted to bring up was real estate excise taxes. As you know, when you guys gave us the authority to do the bond ordinance, we are targeting first quarter percent REIT to come in, and I'm sure that you saw the February numbers did not look promising. However, I'm happy to report while this report that's in the packet is through March, we now also have our April numbers, and we're definitely back on track. In fact, we are now about fourteen thousand ahead of budgeted expectations through April. With that, when I was looking at, say, month over month, so for example, March's numbers, if you look at March's numbers, the, the numbers that we received in two thousand twenty-three are actually the second highest receipts that we have seen in a March period over the last six years, so since two thousand eighteen. That trend held for April as well. So while you compare that to, say, the construction sales tax that we received for March was, you know, just over eight percent, and last year's average was over ten percent, tells us construction is slowing down, but houses, for some reason, are still bucking the trend here, and they're still selling. And we're starting, you know, our last couple of months of REIT have been proving that out. So that, at least from my perspective, makes me feel a whole lot better about our path with regards to the bonds for the municipal campus and potential other investments that may come our way. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I'm available for questions.
All right. Any other questions for Director Hassert? All right. Thank you very much, Director Hassert. Let me go ahead and move on to City Clerk and Records Department with Clerk Wykoff. Clerk Wykoff, go ahead.
Could we do it again? Okay, no. Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and Council again. In your packet is the first quarter of two thousand twenty-three report, and just gonna highlight a couple of things out of there. The first is the State Archives Local Records Grant Program. As you may recall, we applied for and received about forty-seven thousand dollars from the State Archives to digitize a bunch of community development records. They have sent four installments of records to the vendor already, and the fifth installment is being sent out this month, may actually have already been sent out by now. The second item I want to highlight is public records requests. There were increases in January and February, and March stayed pretty consistent with last year. The numbers are in your packet. The next item is our record roundup days. When I wrote the report, we had only had two roundup days. We had our third roundup day yesterday. And with our first two, I estimate that we have recycled and/or shredded approximately twelve thousand five hundred pounds of paper. And we have sent or arranged to send at least ten boxes of records to the State Archives. So this is incredible work that the entire staff is doing. And if you ever want to come by, it's the fourth Monday of each month, and it's, it's actually kind of fun in my world, sorry. The next item, Sherri Simons and our Public Records Officer put together an update on a case law, Cantu versus Yakima School District. The school district violated the Public Records Act, and we wanted to show council and the public what we are doing to be risk averse, if you will, in the Public Records Act. So there is a table in the pack, in the packet that shows things that the court found against the school district, and then things that the city is doing to mitigate those risks. And if anybody has any questions about specifics, Sherri Simonson is available. Lastly, I wanted to highlight our interns. Many of you know our two interns as they are locals. Zach Humphreys is currently an intern with the city. He helped everyone that went to National League of Cities get their, all their travel and itineraries figured out, as well as the Economic Alliance fly-in that I think is happening this next month. He helped with all the legislative session tracking and coordinated that five-two-two summit that happened just recently. He's also a staff assistant to CHSAB, EDAB, and the SLT group. And then Haley Petty, I can't forget Haley, because she was, she was my helper for the entire summer and into fall, and she, I just wanted to say, she created a master list of ordinances, the resolutions, and a historical roster of all of our boards and commissions, which has literally saved me hours, hours of time trying to find information. She also started with sixty-two boxes of clerk records that I had her go through. She transferred twenty-eight of them to the State Archives, destroyed eighteen, and was left with only about sixteen boxes until Mr. Worthen found me about twelve more the other day. Thank you, Ben. And then, last but not least, in honor of Administrative Professionals Day, which is tomorrow, I wanted to give a quick shout out to Sherri Simonson. She is my right-hand person, and all the other admin staff that work for the city. They are amazing, and you have a great staff. Thank you.
Any questions for Clerk Wykoff? Councilmember Kenny, go ahead.
Thank you for these reports. They're really interesting. I read them word for word. They're very well put together from the lovely picture of our museum on the cover to Sherry's work with comparing City of Monroe actions versus Yakima School District to your amazing shredding of all the paper and just, you know, cleaning things up. Just really appreciate everything you do and these reports are really, really informative and interesting. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Kenny. Any other questions for Clerk Wykoff? All right. Next will be H R I T from Director Worthen, AKA still seat sixteen.
Coming to you live from seat sixteen. Thank you, Mayor. Evening, Council. Was that fourteen thousand pounds? I don't, is that what you said for a record? That, that's a lot of, that's a lot of paperwork and the patience that Jody has when I go in and say, I found this from nineteen forty-two. Do you, what do you think is the retention schedule on this? And this happens countless times. So she kind of underplayed her hand in that, but Jody hasn't been here that long, but a lot of the paper still is here from a long, long time ago before Jacob was even here. So, and she gets a lot of these odd questions and her patience is beyond because I would have, I probably would have left by now, but thanks, Jody. We couldn't do it without you. So. But back to my report. So we have a couple new hires, Terry and Gloriana, both in community development, started recently. They are both permit techs and getting the lay of the land and working hard through that, which is great. We are still looking for a couple seasonals, which is our normal time of the year, but we've already onboarded five of them, which is pretty good. So the previous few years, it's been a struggle, I would say, to find them, but we found five this year and we're excited about that. Anniversary list, I'll just call out four that are up there in years. Vince Bertrand, he's been here for fifteen years. Detective Paul Henderson's been here for sixteen, as well as Mark Newman in Public Works, and then Ryan Anderson, who's a Public Works supervisor, has been here for twenty-one. The rest of this stuff is in my report.
All right. Thank you very much, Councilmember Gamble. Go ahead.
I was just wondering, Director Worthen, when you were gonna Clerk Wykoff know that you actually have a warehouse of boxes and you're just slow rolling them sixteen minutes.
I've always learned it's about timing, Councilmember Gamble. So I just slowly, I think these are yours. Yeah.
All right. Thank you. Community Development Report with Director Bailey, coming from seat fourteen. Did, did you want to do IT? I figured it was in your report. Okay. Yep. Go ahead, Director Bailey.
Okay, thank you. I think it may, members of council. I, well, apparently the theme tonight for, for department updates is roundup, the roundup rec, records roundup day, because that's the project highlight for community development as well, which is kind of an odd project to be in there, but as you can see, it's a big thing internally. And I can assure you that community development has their fair share of that twelve thousand five hundred pounds of paper. One of the things that I want to emphasize, other than, and there's an interesting photo in the, in the department update of a before and after, which my staff is very proud of. And this helps, this helps to get rid of, to save some space for our move to the, to the new temporary office. But one of the things that it's really going to help with is there's a lot of, we're not just getting rid of documents. We're, we're going through and scanning. So this is going to help particularly by all departments, but I know in my department, we do a lot of research for projects and having easy access to electronic records as well as aiding the, the, the ability for the city to respond to records requests. So it's, as you can see, the staff is, is very proud of our achievements in that. And it, and it's, I will say, every city I've ever worked for talks about doing this. This is the first place I've ever worked that's actually doing it. And, and it started out a little like it felt like people are like, oh God, are we really going to have to do that? But it was, it, it's, it's been kind of, it's an interesting day. You might pop your head in on, on record roundup day because it's sort of a, a different day in City Hall. With that said, update on a couple of ongoing projects. Two, two permits related to the City Hall renovation and the move to the temporary office. We have a, an upcoming May fourth conditional use hearing for the, for the move to the new building that our, our use is a, as a, as a government office is a, is a conditional use in that building. So we'll be holding that public hearing on the fourth. I fully expect that it will be a short hearing with an approval. Also, our staff has been, has been working on putting together the building permit for the City Hall renovation. And one of the deadlines that was brought up at the previous E3 committee is the city is adopting new building permits. And the deadline for going, for getting permits under the, under the current code and not the new code is, will be the end of June. And I know that Jacob's staff has been working very hard to get that done. Everybody's aware of that deadline and we fully expect to meet that. One eagerly anticipated decision that we did receive is, you can recall from our discussion from, about the tourist commercial zone and the outstanding appeal for, for the director's interpretation about regarding outdoor storage in the tourist commercial zone. We did get the decision from the hearings examiner, which did affirm the director's interpretation, which means that outdoor storage is not allowed in tourist commercial zone. There's still an outstanding appeal period for, for, for that action, which I believe expires on May the ninth. So we'll see if anything comes up on that. I, I want to thank everyone for that, that was able to attend the kickoff meeting for the comp plan. I thought it was well attended and I appreciate the comments that, that council has made regarding that meeting. With that, I'll conclude my report. If you have any questions.
All right. Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Bailey? Is the temporary encampment on your report?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Sounds good. All right. Let me go ahead and move on to the next report then, which is Economic Development Report with, with our manager, Christian, I would say Tyler. I just, you know. I'll just go with seat seventeen.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. The Economic Development Board met twice in March, discussed several things, a couple highlights for you. One is a stormwater source control business inspection program. Megan Darrell out of our Public Works Department came and discussed this. This is, has to do with the MPDS permit, which is the National Pollute and Discharge Elimination System Phase Two permit. Got that out. We're still on the two thousand and nineteen. It's a five-year cycle permit, but it does require starting in two thousand and twenty-three to inspect businesses to keep our stormwater safe. Inspection does kind of sound like a little bit of a strong word. This is an educational program where our staff will be going out and just helping educate to make sure that we're not putting things down the drain that we should not be. So they are in contact, letters are going out and they will be administering that plan over the next several years. They're, over time, all businesses in Monroe do need to be inspected. And so that's kind of just going on a rolling process over a period of time. Another presentation that was received was on our Choose Monroe publication, which I'm sure you're all familiar with. Ms. Katie Darrell from our Parks Department came and gave presentation on that. And the Choose Monroe publication launched in two thousand and eighteen. It switched to a Mormon row-centric publication in two thousand and twenty-two. And she was just looking for some input from the Economic Development Advisory Board, if that is still the best way to, to market and to get our information out there. So it will continue through this year. And then the board will once again reconvene and discuss going forward if that is still the best thing and then provide recommendation to council. Final couple of things that are in your packet are the work plan for the Economic Development Advisory Board for twenty-three and twenty-four, as well as your Monroe Business Newsletter for March. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to take them and Mr. Mayor, I'll turn back over to you. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Any questions? All right. Thank you very much, Tyler. All right. We're going to move now to the City Administrator Report with Administrator Knight, Extend Agenda. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. And looking forward to May second, we do have a Public Safety Committee meeting planned. The agenda items for that meeting include a municipal court quarterly report from Judge Ness, the Police Department twenty-twenty-two department reports, the annual report for professional service standards and use of force, and then the draft business brochure for Human Services with Rachel Adams. We originally thought we didn't have any study session items and we're going to propose that we have a Transportation Benefit District meeting that night instead. But now it appears that we may have one item and so we may have a study session last thirty minutes, followed by the Transportation Benefit District Annual Meeting. So we still may need to have that study session. If it turns out that we don't, we'll go ahead and cancel that and alert council and just have the Transportation Benefit District meeting alone. Looking forward then to the ninth of May, we will have a Legislative Affairs Committee meeting with a legislative recap. And then for the regular business meeting, we have two presentations, one from the Snow Isle Libraries and then a legislative recap with our lobbyists. So the legislate, the legislative committee will get a recap from me because it'll be a little bit more in-depth than the one that'll come forward then to council, which will focus mostly on items related to our legislative agenda on both federal and state. For other items then for that meeting, we will have a new business item for potentially a mural contract and handbook updates then with Mr. Worthen, and then a couple of reports, Parks, Economic Development, and Human Services. And that is it for the May ninth meeting.
Councilmember Gamble, go ahead.
Would we need a motion to cancel the study session?
No, you don't.
Okay. Just the, just the business.
Well, we have used motions to cancel study sessions, but if it turns out that we need to hold that meeting, it will remain on the books, but at the last minute, if we need to cancel it, the mayor can cancel it for lack of agenda items.
To his, to the other part of this question, does the council need to take a, make a motion to cancel a regular meeting? Or is that something the mayor can do as well?
I, that's a great question. I don't know the answer to that. Is it in?
Scheduled or we're, we're known?
It's not that we have a regular session that, that is up right now, but I think that there, the question was in purchase consistency.
Yeah.
So. We, we normally do a vote and.
Yeah, no, that's all I remember. That's why I was just asking. I can't remember the last time when we didn't move to cancel a meeting ahead of time. So that's where.
I can think of lack of form where we've canceled, but.
That's about it. Yeah.
Okay, okay. All right. Any other questions?
What is it?
Go ahead.
Is, but it's not advertised right now as a meeting, I guess. That's the bigger.
It is advertised currently as a meeting.
As a meeting?
Yep. You're talking about the study session on May second. Yes, it is advertised currently as a meeting.
Really the reason why we've always tried to be consistent. So someone makes plan to come to the study session. That's why we've always, I think that's why we always try to do that. It was more for the public interaction. It's not that we can't do it, but it's a bit of a a bummer if someone makes the arrangements and then they come to speak, they want to speak before council and then it's Transportation Benefit District.
And I'm understanding in conversations I've had earlier this evening that we'll probably know by Thursday or Friday if we're going to cancel it or not tomorrow.
Okay.
So. All right. Anything else? All right. Go ahead, Administrator Knight. City Administrator Report.
There we go. So council members may have seen a Facebook post regarding a public meeting, a community meeting per the municipal code that was originally going to be scheduled sooner. There was a second post that went out yesterday from the city, rescheduling that meeting to Thursday, May eleventh at five P M. It will be held at the St. Vincent de Paul Community Resource Center. There's a location on Main Street. And the purpose of the meeting is to share information about the safe parking program. And just to be clear, under the city's temporary encampment codes, this is the applicant's meeting. So it's not, it's not the city's meeting. And it is the applicant who has the choice in the code to select a couple of different ways in order to advertise that meeting. And those ways include the city's website, a post at the location, a post in the newspaper. And so it was posted both on the city's website and in the Everett Herald. The Facebook post isn't part of the regular process and probably won't be part of the process moving forward because again, that's not codified within the municipal code. Our municipal code follows the state's minimum standards. And that was what the council and the community had decided at that time when we adopted that code a couple of years back. So that temporary, or excuse me, that community meeting is scheduled. And I think we are wanting to make sure that if there is a forum or expected to be a forum of council attending that, that we do notice that in advance.
So with that said, do, do we have people that do have council members that anticipate being there on May eleventh? May eleventh?
Thursday, May eleventh.
All right. If you find that you may be attending, if you could just let us know by May eighth. Go ahead, Councilmember Gamble.
Is there, is there any reason why we wouldn't just notice this as a potential form?
Well, we can notice it as potential.
Yeah, I think that's, that would probably be the best.
Okay.
Right there. Five P M.
Okay. And the, just checking with Clerk Wykoff, did, did the email get sent to the council? Director Bailey, go ahead.
So a, a new notice for the community meeting will be sent out by code. It's, the applicant is the one who is supposed to send out the notice. So it's being revised by the St. Vincent de Paul staff. And I suspect that that will be sent out to council tomorrow and it will reflect the date that, that that Deborah had mentioned in her report. So apologize for the confusion. This is the first one of these applications that we've done and it has a very unique noticing process that is very different from what our normal one is. So.
Thank you. Councilmember Hanford.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, we already received the email. And it's, and I already responded to you. You're just so busy getting rid of all the recycle Mondays. You probably didn't see my email to you that, that I'm planning to attend. So. Thank you.
All right. Anything further on this topic? Deborah? Anything else?
I don't know. Next slide. Is there another?
Here we go. I wanted to just alert council that the wayfinding signs, the fabrication of the wayfinding signs is wrapping up. We did see the contractor out there the last couple of weeks, putting in the slabs for the signs. And so we anticipate that the contractor will be back here in the next couple of weeks installing these lovely new wayfinding signs. So I just wanted to give council a preview of what those signs are looking like. So you see a couple of park signs there on the far right and then the wayfinding signs in the middle and then kind of the complete package there on the, on the far right. I say right to begin with left and then that will then right. Thank you.
All right.
That's it.
All right.
Kudos to, to Scott Peterson and his team for continuing to manage that project.
Thank you. Councilmember Hanford, you had a follow-up?
Thank you, Mayor. I was just wondering what the last date is that we're going to have for the council meeting in these chambers before the remodel begins. Do we have that yet?
Jacob? Seat twelve?
Wait, I thought this was mine.
Yeah, it is.
I would guess it will be between the middle of June and the middle of July.
Okay, thank you.
And at that time, my gap will be, will be replaced with a sledgehammer?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. All right. Mayor's report, so I would go ahead and suggest you take a look at Monroe this week for updates from the last two weeks. Second, just a couple of bits of good news, I guess, from the legislature. And again, this is subject to the governor signing the final documents, but state operating. And again, this is subject to the governor signing the final documents, but state operating budget, we have two hundred thousand dollars toward human services, which is great. We also currently have one point one million dollars for construction for the Monroe Therapeutic Court, which is awesome. And then we had some changes occur with the State Route five two two and Paradise Lake Road interchange and also the widening, which you can see listed there. So if I'm not mistaken, the the amount of money that had been put in the budget previously was way in the future and now it's in closer years. So it's not that it's going to get designed or that right away will be acquired, you know, next year, but it's getting us closer to to getting the project completed. All right, does anybody have any questions about any of that? All right, I've got a couple of other things too. So we we, I would encourage you to thank our legislators, especially Senator Hawkins and Representative Steele for their work in these areas, both on the Senate side and also on the House side. And then I would also encourage you to to thank I was going to say Senator Low, Representative Low, he was a big proponent for five two two along with Senator Hawkins, but also Senator Leas and Senator Levick and others were part of that as well. So just a lot of great work. I think that our lobbyists or government affairs folks did a great job this year too. We'll talk a little bit more about that as part of the debrief in a couple of weeks, but we met with them every Friday for, you know, half hour to an hour to go over the bills that were coming up and I think it made us a lot more effective and taught us some really good skills, I think, on the staff and also mayor level, so. Okay, a couple of other items, one, you heard two people talk with us this morning about unhoused resident in the downtown. Just letting you know that staff is working with the property owner and also with with that person. So we're, as all of you are aware, there are limits on our ability to do things and we are probably as far ahead as as many other jurisdictions and working on these issues. So just letting you know that we're working that issue. Also, last week I attended the Blueberry Park Design Project that happened here in Chambers. This is on Thursday. We had probably about about ten to a dozen people attend and a bunch of kids. So I took the opportunity to encourage the kids to dream about what they wanted in in the park. And so we've blown the budget by by double what it was originally. Mike's looking for money, I think. But one of the things that was that was really cool, our Parks Board member, Mariana and I forget her last name, Medina. She talked about, because the design, so it's a rubber mat on the bottom, right? And the designs that originally came in really lacked context with the neighborhood. And so she brought up how it'd be nice to have monarch butterflies and brighter colors as part of the the rubber base, the flooring. And so staff is going back to work with with them to come up with a different design than the blue with the stars or the just just sort of what looked like a creek appearance. So that was really cool and and I I think that everybody had a really good time just sort of expressing how much they want zip lines and all these other things. And if we put in, we're not going to be able to put in anything else because they require a lot of space. So but that that was a really good meeting. And then I will be attending St. Helmut County tomorrow, tomorrow. So just letting you know that that is, I'll be attending that remotely. They've got a Zoom meeting for that. Also, we've already talked about the temporary encampment. We talked about the legislature. The last thing is Arbor Day, so I have a an appointment that just came up yesterday at eleven o'clock on Friday morning in downtown Seattle. I may not be able to make it back in time for Arbor Day at one o'clock. And so Mayor Proton Davis, I don't know if you're able to say a few words, but if you're available at one P M on Friday, I would really appreciate it. And then I know that a couple of the council members may be there as well and Councilmember Davis, what I usually do is, or what I did last year that I recommend doing again this year is inviting the president of the school board to say a few words. Pretty certain that that's Director Bumpus right now and they're going to have two classes this year of what, fifth graders? Anyway, two two classes of fifth graders, third graders? Fifth graders. Chief Jolly knows they're going to be fifth graders. So there are going to be two classes of fifth graders there and it's it's just nice having the the school board president say a few words to the kids that, so. I think that's all I have. Does anybody have any questions for me? All right. Well, we do have a need for an executive session. It is property acquisition person to R C W forty two point thirty point one ten subsection one subsection little beef for for an initial ten minutes. And we will return back to this regular meeting when we're done with potential action to follow. I will announce any extensions that are exerted, which will then be announced in the Zoom meeting as well as out in the lobby. So we are now in executive session beginning at eight seventeen.
For the record, Jody Whiteoff, City Clerk, the executive session has been extended eight minutes. For the record, this is Jody Whiteoff, City Clerk. The executive session has been extended an additional five minutes.
Okay, we're now out of executive session.
Do you have a side for them?
And I understand that there's a motion to add an item to the agenda. Okay, Councilmember Davis, go ahead.
So I'll move to add an item to the agenda.
Have a motion from Councilmember Davis, second from Councilmember Hanford to add an item to the agenda. Call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes six zero. Councilmember Davis?
Yes, I moved to authorize the mayor to convey and execute non binding letters of intent for acquisition of the Union Bank and Lindalo LLC properties in substantially the form presented to council, together with such minor revisions, the mayor may deem necessary and appropriate.
Second, from Councilmember Hanford, to authorize the mayor to convey and execute non binding letters of intent for acquisition of the Union Bank and Lindalo LLC properties in substantial reform presented to council, together with such minor revisions, the mayor may deem necessary and appropriate. Any discussion on the motion? Saying none, I'll call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes six zero. This is all that we have on the agenda this evening unless there's objection, we are adjourned. We are adjourned. Have a great week, everybody.